Two, provide that property owners may only exchange trash containers for a container of a different size in January and July of each year. Three, provide that city-approved garbage bags will no longer be distributed to residents at no charge, but may be purchased in bundles of six or $6.
Okay. Are there any questions or comments on this? Commissioner? Okay, Commissioner Headen.
Yeah. Under 50.02, Section B, it's my understanding that we had asked for six per year when it comes to unlimited pickup. With unlimited pickup, it basically, per my interpretation, Mr. Moore, is that unlimited pickup could have been whenever they so want. I thought it was the commission that had asked for at least to be at least six per year.
In working with Mr. Bradley to draft this, the proposed revisions, he felt important for Public Works to have discretion because he thought, you know, four might be good, six, you know, he wanted to have the discretion to schedule it when he, based upon his knowledge of the, of the needs of the city's residents. So this would give him, instead of having a set formula where if you want to change it next year, he would, he would propose, well, here you go, here are Tom.
When we talked about that, we talked about having the ability to increase or decrease as the need arose without having to go back and amend the ordinance each time.
Mm-hmm.
And so that's why it was worded that way. It's my understanding from the commission that you guys want us to go to six times a year right now.
Right. And all I'm asking for, for Tom and Robert and the rest of the commission is that something be worded that have at least a minimum of six per year, and then you can change that at your own discretion, but at least gives us the six we asked for.
Okay.
And I don't know how the rest of the commission feels about that, but I would like to see at least six be, be worded in there somehow.
I would like to, in addition to that, I would like to see, I think we did talk about this as well, that it be published on our website and somewhere else at the very beginning of the year in January.
Yes.
So that people can look and, not just the website, but other places, the newspaper and wherever else might be good, so that it may be out of attention to the can, it's too much work, I don't know, but so people can plan the year.
Right. Well, one of the ideas that, that we were talking about was to make it a set week of the month, so that people naturally know every other month, on the second week of the month, that's your free week. And if that's the week that works out to where we don't hit the holidays, then, and I think that it probably is, then that's something that, rather than have a schedule and someone has to run to that schedule, they know the second week of the month.
I think that's what I actually recommended, but, but I think you guys told us that, that could be problematic, so.
Well, I think someone mentioned the fourth week of the month.
Yeah.
And we, we worried about Thanksgiving and.
They'll pick a week anyway, right?
Yeah. Well, that's what we have to do, is just have to make sure that, that week is one that clears as many of the holidays as we can, so there's, there's a lot less.
So we're gonna do six?
Well, and in, in drafting it this way, our thought was, you know, Public Works, Tom would come to you all and say, you all want six this year, this is when the pickup will be in, you know, 2014. These are the times. And then, at the end of 2014, Tom would say, well, we picked up six times and we used this week, based upon our experience, you know, we can go to five or we need to go to seven. And then you all, it's up to you to say, no, we want seven and we want it the third week. But by drafting the ordinance in this manner, this gives you all the discretion each year to change how many times you're gonna pick them up, how many times you're gonna have the unlimited trash pickup day without having to amend the ordinance each day, each time.
And Tom, the, Tom, the freedom to, if something gets really weird, that you can alter that if you need to.
That's right. That's right. But he's certainly going to come to the commission and say, you know, these are the number of pickup days for unlimited trash.
With consistency.
In this year.
And I was actually okay with the way it was worded, but the reason I was okay with it, I actually went in and tried to plug in the, the six times a year and kept running into problems of a holiday or, or something. So I kinda liked that they would do it as often as necessary. I mean, if it can go up even, you know, every month, that'd be great, but it was hard to, you know, I think the advertising of it is very important because that's what people wanna know, when can I put anything out? You know, I think the frequency, I, I haven't had a lot of complaints about the frequency. I've had complaints about, we don't know when we can push stuff out.
Right. It's more consistent.
Right.
Well, is, is everybody okay with the wording, so it leaves the flexibility? And we, or do you feel like you need to?
We can direct.
This gives flexibility.
We can, if we want to direct, we can direct it from the end of the year.
You could have put the minimum of four in there because you already had that. But I like the flexibility of having four for that.
It's just easier the way it's drafted. It'll be, it'll be quicker to do it this way than to have to go back and do it. The ordinance change, which takes two weeks.
That, that was the thought. And, and of course, Tom, I'm sure you will note, inform the commission and say, this is, you know, when we plan to do it and here's the advertising. If the commission doesn't like that, of course, you all can say, no, we don't wanna agree with that, we need to do it this many times a year, you know, at this week. So that was the thought.
And one of the things we talked about as well is to prepare, if this ordinance passes as, as is or with whatever changes that, that you put into it, is we would prepare something to attach at least once to all the cans that says, here are the changes to the ordinance. And you can go to the website to see the schedule, here it is, but you can also check the website periodically to see that. Because if we don't do something like that, it's not gonna, the word's not gonna get out.
And some of our senior people, you know, don't get on the computer as much, but they can see that on a trash can.
Right.
So would, would we do that, this will go into effect in July?
Yes.
And then we would do that when it, the new thing starts?
We would do it in July.
Okay. I mean, we would attach to the cans in July?
Yeah.
Okay.
We have to come up with a system to do that effectively.
Commissioner Headen.
I have another one I have a question about when it comes to the ordinance, if you wanna move on past 50.02. 50.03, number one, letter A, I don't know if I, if I read it wrong, but I was under the impression that the fee would be waived within the two months as well, that people could change. So that the fee would not just be waived if you went to a smaller container, but the fee itself would be waived, so if you wanna go to a, a larger can in January or July.
Then there would essentially be no fee at all.
Right. I know that, but it allows more cans to hopefully get traded out and the smaller cans might come in and we might actually get more people doing the $4 a month with the larger can trading out.
Okay.
Versus everyone just using a smaller can, then paying $20, then paying $4 a month. That the fee itself would be waived, maybe they'd go from a smaller can to a larger can, stick with $4 a month, realizing they're still getting a pretty good deal with a larger can.
Right.
And that they're not having to pay a dollar a bag if they're going out for an extra bag every month, which would still be a dollar a week.
That's not what I understood leaving the meeting, so if that's what you're all's thought is, then we should just cut out any upsize fee whatsoever and say, we're only gonna do it on, on these two months of the year.
That was my understanding.
The reason, the reason it's written that way was that there was a question of, can we have a, an upsized holiday to encourage people to, to move up?
Mm-hmm.
And it was brought up that, no, because the ordinance specifically says that, in order to have that holiday, the ordinance doesn't allow it, you'd have to amend the ordinance. And so we wrote it so that at such time in the future, if we wanted to have that upsized holiday, that we could advertise it and do it without having to go back and amend the ordinance. But my understanding was that that didn't erase that upsized fee altogether. The downsized was always no charge.
Right, the downsized is always free, but if you're gonna pay $20 a month, plus upgrade for another $4 a month.
No, it's not.
Why not not upgrade and just pay a dollar a month, still doing the $4 a month, without paying a $20 upgrade? And so you're still using, everyone's still using the smaller free cans, but paying a dollar a month for a trash bag a week, which would still be $4 a month without ever doing an upgrade. If you need more smaller cans, waive the fee, maybe more people use the 64-gallon can versus the 32, and then you don't have to buy the.
If that's, if that's what you wanna do, but that's not my.
That was my understanding of when we left. I don't know, I can't speak for everyone else, that was just my own interpretation.
If I misinterpreted, I'm sorry.
Yeah, no, you're fine, I'm just trying to get clarification of this ordinance.
Sorry I'm late. That was mine, what Commissioner Headen said was mine too, but I could be confused, it wouldn't be the first time.
Okay.
But I, I thought that, that if you, that there was gonna be, I must have forgot the part about we have to change the ordinance, but I thought there was gonna be a holiday for one or two mon, you know, those two periods of time where you could upsize at no cost so that we could get more small cans into, into our inventory, so we wouldn't have to buy as many.
I would say.
And so, that's all right. And so you're saying that if we write it that way, we've gotta go through more hoops?
What I understood coming out of our meeting was that we were only gonna upsize, period, in July and January.
Right, that's right.
And that if we so chose to advertise a holiday, we could.
Okay.
But, but we would still charge in, in those two months unless we advertised that holiday.
So we still have the opportunity to do it that way?
We still have the opportunity to give that holiday, as long as we advertise it ahead of time. If you, if you wanna say, we never.
No, 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 I'm fine with that. I understand that.
Okay.
So we can do what Commissioner Headen is saying, if we choose to?
If we choose to say there's a holiday, we can, based on the way it's rewritten.
Okay.
Is that correct, Rob?
Correct.
What's a holiday? I'm sorry.
All right. What we're talking about is when you go from a, from a, a one-size can to a larger can, we have a $20 upsize fee, just a one-time fee, and then you pay the, the new size, the month amount for that new size. One of the things that we talked about a few months ago, to get people to go ahead and move up to the bigger can size, was to waive that $20 fee.
Right.
Okay, that'd be good.
Right.
Right. And so it was pointed out to us, well, you can't do that unless you change the ordinance that allows you to waive that. And so the way it's written now, we would only upsize in January or July, and we would still charge that $20 fee to upsize.
We don't want them to upsize, do you? I mean, I thought the whole thing was recycle more.
Yeah, we, we were running out of small containers, so we wanted to upside, but we had plenty of those.
Yeah, but I thought the whole thing of this page you throw is to decrease trash and increase recyclables.
Mm-hmm.
So why do we, we don't want them to upsize the trash?
Which is why we put the $20 fee initially, with it. So that you could always go down with no charge, but going up would cost, would cost the citizen.
Yeah.
And, and the way it is drafted now, excuse, I'm sorry, Commissioner Headen. But the way it is drafted now is that, for instance, if, if you do want to waive the, the $20 fee in July for people wanting to upsize, then you can tell Mr. Bradley, we'd like you to waive the $20 fee for people that wanna upsize.
Okay.
And Mr. Bradley will say, will do, and make the appropriate advertising, and then it'll be, the fee will be waived in July. And then, when you look at your receipts in January, if you determine that, no, we don't wanna waive the fee, then the fee would remain in place. So again, it gives you discretion based upon your needs in those particular months.
Without having to change the ordinance every time the commission comes in.
Correct. That's right.
Hopefully, hopefully.
Any other questions?
Thank you all for the clarification. I think that's enough.
So everything's good to leave the ordinance? They're about to have it out, or are they gonna take, push the board to give a reading?
Can we also get a copy of the handout before you guys put it out?
Yes.
To kinda proofread and see?
Yeah.
I know there's some citizens I would like to point out the fact that the can should be put up after they've been empty.
And where you put them up is key.
Yeah.
You mean standing up, not actually taken in?
Where on your lot?
Where on your property they should be.
Let me ask you a quick question since I missed the first part, real fast. How many pickup days do we have of the, the free?
Yes, sir. The ordinance states that, that, that the director will set that, okay?
When he can give the flexibility.
Gives us the flexibility. Now, you all have instructed us to do six a year.
Just what a call, just double check.
But if you come back and say, do nine, do 12.
Or do nine.
Do four, do nine, this way we don't have to change the ordinance.
And then, and then I got here when we're talking about advertising, which is we're gonna make a real strong effort to advertise.
When this is, when these changes are approved, I feel like we're gonna have to really make a concerted effort to let everybody know what these changes are. And so we have talked about having something to attach to the cans, to each can, and that's gonna take a little legwork on our part, but it's gonna be important to do that, to attach to those cans, so that people will understand, the, the end user will understand what the changes are.
Okay, real fast, not to belabor the point, but the, if we in fact decided to make July a holiday for upsizing, when would that need to be communicated so that there was enough time to do it?
Actually, this July?
Or, or this January, or, like, what kind of a timeframe are you gonna need to implement?
Well, if we're only going to upgrade in July or January, I think, I think we would need at least a month or two ahead of time, just to kinda get a feel for letting people know, you know, kinda do a media.
So you can kinda let us know a couple of months prior to see, so are you anticipating not doing it this July, since it's already almost June 1st?
That's correct.
Okay.
Your bills are.
Okay.
Yeah.
I'm done.
Anything else you wanna do?
If you wanna have the waive the fee for this July, I would recommend that you tell us by no later than the voting meeting in June, so that, so that Tom has the ability to. I think Tom said it was, wouldn't be a real good idea to even do it now, right?
Well, if the brochures are going out July 1st, you might get a couple, a couple hundred people who might wanna change cans in July, but at least let them know, if you wanna change, you change it now, or you're gonna have to wait till January.
Yeah. Well, we're, it's gonna say that anyway, it's gonna say, well, it will change in July and January, these only times of the year. Now, I guess if we have a new customer, that's, that's a different, totally different issue. But as far as the same customer switching out to a new can, then it'll only be in July or January. So we'll just have to have some kind of media put in the paper and cable tin and, and pull up signs on the street.
So y'all just wanna wait to decide whether or not, or how do you wanna do it?
I mean, I would, I would like to see this, this July, but I know it's rushing it, but it's, it's hard, and how, how are we looking on small cans?
Well, we're.
There's another question.
We're about out. We've ordered some lids, but we haven't ordered cans. We got, we had, the commission told us to go ahead and order some, and we're trying to delay it as much as possible.
Well, let's advertise.
One of the things that, that, just to consider, not that I'm trying to sway one way or the other, but if, if you're making changes that we don't, maybe we make these changes that we're talking about here, see what effect it has, and then we can determine in January how to go versus making these changes and then making too much at once. We really aren't gonna know what effect these changes had. I'm, I'm not sure.
The only thing we consider too is, this would just be first reading in our next one, we'd have to do, if we're gonna try to make it July, you'd wanna probably have June work session as a, as a re, as the second reading or even before then, 'cause we can't really do anything until it gets to second reading.
Correct. I think it'd be a bad idea to advertise.
Not, not the one, just the standard, if they do that, then we would have to do another special.
I always wait till January.
I just, I don't, I just was thought, just as a point of, just so you would know, they can't do anything until it gets to second reading. So if you wanna do a second reading, we just need to do a special, we can just do another quick meeting.
No, it's our work.
It can be done. I mean, barely, right?
We can have a quick meeting right after the work session.
Or do it before, I don't know, I'm sure they probably don't wanna wait till June 10th if we're gonna have to do it July 1st. Thank you, you hit you.
We'll do whatever y'all want.
I'm fine with waiting. I, I do think that we, I do think it's a good idea, I do think we need to get more people upsize, because I, I agree with Commissioner Bowers about the recycling part, but we have so many people using small cans that I don't believe that's really adequate to their needs, they're just doing it 'cause it's free. So I'm fine with whatever.
I'm fine with waiting, because I, I really want them to understand what we're doing, we have to get that advertisement out there, because people have gotten used to things now, and you throw too much at, at once. You know, 'cause right now we're doing because it's our problem, because we don't have a lot of small cans.
Mm-hmm.
And that's really our intent to try to get them to move up. They are recycling more, are the ones that do recycle, and some people are gonna do it on oversized cans again. But, you know, it's one of those, at, at least I'm glad you're here, so I understand why it was written the way it was, 'cause I read through it, I didn't, wasn't able to verbalize it as well as Mr. Headen, but I just kinda looked through it and said, well, I think this means this, and kept going. And I'm glad you, you also brought up that question about the holiday period, 'cause I missed that.
Mm-hmm.
Yeah, I missed the little call of the holiday period, and, and once you start talking about it, and you was talking about it, but just then you know it as a holiday.
So you want your first reading on this as it is? Okay. I'll ask that you did it by title and summary.
By title, an ordinance amending Chapter 50, Garbage, Solid Waste, Sections 50.02, 50.03, 50.06, 50.10, and 50.14 of the City, of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances. By summary, this ordinance amends Chapter 50 of the City of Frankfurt Code of Ordinances by specifically amending Sections 50.02, 50.03, 50.06, 50.10, and 50.14.
First read. Next item is the discussion of.
Thank you, Tom.
Yes, thank you so much.
Thank you.
Next item is employee compensation. Anybody wanna start?
I think I got my question answered.
Go ahead.
By Rob, 'cause the only thing that, we didn't flush out, we, we were trying to see the difference budget-wise, if we, if we paid everybody $500 versus the raises, because a few of us have gotten emails about the raises, but, you know, it's just a few. And I think because, I think the plant board came out with their increases, and they're about the same time in, in the article of papers, I was about the raises, that's why I kinda perked people, man, you're raising this year, but you're gonna get raises, kinda gave it a negative connotation, but then I've also heard that, you know, 2.5% really isn't that much money, you know, when you talk about an employee, but it is an incentive. So I, I was, I was okay, I just didn't understand about the $500, you know, while we didn't flush it out, but I think I've gotten more information, and I think I passed that around for other people to kinda look at, and see if they had any questions, Rob.
Anybody else?
Yeah. Okay, I got you. Say a couple of things, I, you're right about the publicity, not only you throw that in, but throw in all the articles they're writing about the county, and, and the, thanks. And the, and so as a result, it's, it's in the news a lot, and, you know, I, I've got four quick things, and I think, I think we've been trying to work together, so I think it's, it's a good idea to try to find a consensus on this if we can, and maybe we can. You know, I'm uncomfortable raising salaries when you just raise taxes, I think it sends the wrong message. And so therefore, you know, my preference would be not to raise salaries at all, but I realize there are five people here, so I, you know, there's several choices I think that we have. I think, one, you don't raise them at all, another choice is you just give a flat amount, which rewards those people a little more that make less, and propose $500. I think a third choice is you give less than what's been proposed in the budget, and I think a fourth choice is you go along with what's in the budget. I understand how hard people work, I understand how they've done an effective job the last three or four years in cutting costs. I just think that, one, with taxes being increased and then given a raise is a, is a problem, and I think the other thing is, is that the biggest employer in town, once again, is not giving a raise, and our income, overall income is not rising very fast, so I'm a little nervous. I realize we have lowered our personnel costs, and I appreciate that. So I just thought this was something we ought to talk about, and perhaps we could come up with a, a compromise.
Any, any commissioners who want to, any input? You don't have to, you was asking.
So the median salary is $41,000, is that right?
That's what.
So if we did a flat 500, average, that would save about $304, is that right?
Well, if we do 500 versus where we are now, the proposal we're doing this year will impact us about $41,000 each year. We did, if we did $500 per employee, it would be about $177,000 for the general plant. So the gap is 23, something like that. Go to the next business we have.
I'll say, we're, I'm gonna say, I, I'm gonna support the city manager's budget, and mainly because it's, it's got a $200,000 gap between revenues and expenditures, where there's gonna be anticipated more revenues than expenses, and since it's come to us that it's balanced and actually has a surplus, then it seems like the, the department heads have worked hard enough to make decisions, first on equipment, and felt that it was important for personnel to be compensated under this budget, and therefore, I will support the city manager's re-commissioned budget, respectfully.
I have a question kind of related to this, just since you brought up the flat 500 to compensate the lower employees, but have we done anything like looking at employees that have been here a long time as compared to newly hires, to see if the salary, salaries for comparable work is equitable? I mean, I know we don't have, we have, what I'm trying to say is when I was looking at the department head's salaries in the newspaper, whatever that was, January or February, that, that there were some, what I thought were discrepancies related to the responsibilities of some of those positions, so have we done that? Do we ever plan to do that? Have we ever done it in the past? I don't think we ever did it when I was here, but is that something we need to do? Now, there's a million questions for you to answer. It's just a thought, because I guess. It's just a thought, because I guess when we're talking about a flat raise of 500 to bring the lower-level paid employee, is there some need to do that? I guess is the question I'm putting out there on the table. And if so, can we look at that for next year? And if not, do we need to do that flat rate?
We did a salary comparison study, the last one, I don't remember the exact year I did, it's been a while, and it, and it did talk about, some, some of the lower paid positions got reclassified and shifted, and some of the supervisory positions in different departments were, were changed to match what the other departments were, trying to standardize it as best they could. There was a problem with some responsibilities in some supervalued positions that really didn't match up. You can't, you just really can't go from one department to another.
When did we do that?
'05 or '06, that last one, so certainly can do, can update that. We certainly can. We can take a look at it next year, as you suggest.
I mean, if you think we need to, I'm just putting that out there, because we're talking about the flat.
I can take a look. See if there's any justification for taking that.
I mean, only if you think we need to.
Well, I wouldn't be prepared to answer it, unfortunately. Sadly, really, but it's something I can take a look at over the next couple of months, and see if we have some discrepancies that we need to tend to...
If I could imagine that, one concern that I think that we need to think through, if you're, if the commission's inclined to do the $500 amount, is you've got 37.5-hour employees that work 1,950 hours a year, you've got 40-hour employees that work 2,080 hours a year, you've got fire crew people who work 2,080 regular hours, and 832 overtime hours a year. So you've got to spread that amount differently based on the number of hours a person's working to get close to your $500 for the year. Part-time people, you don't know how many hours they're going to work, so I'm not sure how you shoot the $500 target, if you're going to apply it to part-time people, or if you would just do something separately or different for part-time people. And those aren't reasons to say no, they're just things that need to be thought out, I think. Just me doing it in, just kind of quick to date, 37.5-hour people, to get to 500, you'd need to adjust 25.6 cents per hour. The 40-hour per week people, you would adjust 24 cents per hour. The fire crew people, you would adjust 15 cents an hour. And it's not going to come up exactly the same for everybody, because we don't round to a hundredth of a finish.
If it's close, though.
It'd be within a couple of minutes, probably, so...
So were you guys going to, if, if the 2.5% raise is in effect, the 1.5 and then 1%, would that apply to part-time people too?
That's, that's, that's weak, how we count.
Not seasonal, but...
Yes, sir. Yes, sir. Any other, any other questions from commissioners?
Leanne asked one question. I'll probably answer her question. She was asking, I reckon, what a $40,000-year person would get under the percentage, you know, which is 2% of 40, it'd be $800, I reckon, if they get the flat 500.
You get any of the questions, because it's what I was getting, overall, thank you. Sorry, I have a funeral to get to.
Hope I didn't work.
Steve girls, thanks for coming.
God bless.
I'm, I'm okay with going the way it is, because to me, it, it comes down really to either giving less, based on the four scenarios, or, or you gave, give them less or go along with what they have, because the 500 seems too complicated, and doesn't really meet the goals, I think, that were set for, you know, doing any kind of encouragement. No raises, I think that would be just opposite.
This has already been published, so we're really down on only two choices.
Anything else? None of you already, to the jury?
So, did we decide anything? We're just going to go with what we have?
That's what, I mean, I'm, I'm for going with what we have, but...
Well, it sounds like the 500 would just be a lot of tedious work in there, and
It would just need to be filmed, eh?
And I don't mean to sway you all one way or the other, because I'm not, I probably, I probably can't support what's in the budget, but that's fine. But it would be tedious on the front end, but it's, these guys are pretty sharp. It may be a bad idea, so you may need to...
I don't think it's a bad idea at all.
But, but those, those guys, all they have to do is make one fix on it. They can correct me if I'm wrong, but you make one fix on each category of what you're talking about, and it's just a simple matter of plugging it in the, the program. Is that correct? I may have simplified it too.
Well, once we change the hourly rate, it'll affect your...
That's what I mean.
We just, we need to make sure we set the...
Just make sure you didn't mess up on the different, different categories.
And you'd, you'd have to make sure that the overtime takes that compensation into effect, so we don't get into trouble with the member...
Yes, sir. It's the most important point.
That's why you have to change that hourly rate, so that the overtime rate gets adjusted at the same time within the payroll system, so that if there are overtime hours paid out, they're paid out at the right rate.
And of course, there are eight hours overtime one week, and 32 hours overtime paid out the next week by statute for members of the fire service.
Okay, any, anyone else? If not, we'll entertain a motion to adjourn.
Maybe we adjourn.
We'll have Commissioner R. second back, Commissioner Henn. In discussion, see none. I'll just defer to the same eye. I propose to stay.
Okay. What is it?